To the eye of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes, regular session held on January twenty first, twenty twenty five at six P M in Board Room Number Five Hundred. Entertaining motion for approval of those minutes. Executive session minutes, held January twenty first, twenty twenty five at six fifty four P M in Board Room Five Hundred. Entertaining motion for approval of those minutes. Authorization for payment of bills.
One question, a financial comparison.
I do, yeah.
Gosh.
I thought maybe it was just me.
Oh, it's not even there.
Yeah.
Well, the dates.
The dates there, but then you can't click on it.
Am I fired? I'll, I'll update that in just a second, so just give me a minute and I'll have it updated before you can.
I noticed our electric bill has gone up quite a bit. Is that just because?
The rates went up, R E C's rates went up.
So that is our regular increase that we're gonna have to.
Yeah, yeah, nothing's changed as far, you know, winter time is more expensive too.
I compared it over.
Last year, yeah, yeah.
We're rather talking about another increase next year, do I understand it? Wait for the comparison or any other questions? Entertaining motion for approval of authorization for payment of bills.
So.
Favor. Okay, citizens communications. Your kind and thoughtful expression of sympathy is deeply appreciated and grateful acknowledged. Dear Knox County Board and Staff of Education, thank you so much for thinking of me at this time. It meant so much to me when I see the candle glowing. It makes me think of my mom smiling. She was a spunky, loving, and very independent lady. Thanks again for thinking of me at this time, Janine Allen Morgan.
Okay, it's there.
Your kind and thoughtful expression. That sympathy is deeply appreciated and greatly acknowledged, Knox County Board of Education and staff. On behalf of Bobby's family, I would like to thank you for the alibi and your kind words and shared memories. Bobby loved his job and was very proud to call you his family. Sincerely, Don Jobe and family. Move on to administrator's report, elementary.
It's pretty light. I feel like we haven't done a whole lot since last time we were together. Valentine's Day parties will be scheduled for as soon as we can return. I know the kids are ready for that. And I'm sure some parents are like, we've had to eat the donuts that we were supposed to send, so now we've gotta buy more treats. I've heard that a couple of times.
And I saw they froze them.
And we've got some things that are coming up for us. Our math team kids, so fourth and fifth grade, along with middle school, has their first round of competition this weekend. And so they have been practicing with Mr. Pipbert, so as soon as we have some information on that, I'll bring that and share that with you. We've got spring activity night that we're putting together, much like last year, we turned the spring one into the family event. We'll keep it and do the same thing with that, so that it's more family-centered rather than just student. In the fall, we do the student-centered one, and then in the spring, we've made that shift to family. Last year, it was well-received and we had some great feedback on that. And then we've got parent-teacher conferences that'll be coming up in March. We were supposed to have day and night with wildlife on Thursday, so kind of depending upon how the weather goes, you know, we may try to reschedule or continue to work with Mr. Sneed on what we're gonna do there. But it's kind of up in the air. Right now, it's planned for the twenty first, but it'll just kind of depends on what the weather does. You have in front of you the elementary beginning and middle comparison for iReady. And so you'll note on there that we have some kindergartners that are missing from the mid-year assessment, just because they test in November and January, whereas everybody else is September and December. So that's why the numbers are a little off at the top. The grid that I pulled for you was the one that compares the two assessments just on top of each other. So the faded line or the one that's a little lighter to read was from the very beginning of the year. And why that window is so big is so that it encompasses that kindergarten assessment time too, because you'll see that it's from the beginning of the school year to November fifteenth. And then our most recent assessment, which was January, end of December, and then January. And then, like I said, we still have some kindergartners finishing up. You can see that we still have some improvement in areas, but we have made great gains in all of the, all of the things. The one that I really like to look at, so if you look at the lines that are kind of hatched, like they have that darker shading in it, those are your kids who are two or more grade levels behind. So when we move those kids up, so like you can see in math, we went from nine percent, which was seventeen kids to seven kids. So that's, you know, that's big when you think about those are kids who are really, really struggling with math and then making such big improvements there. And then when you look at the opposite end of it, that dark green is kids who are two or more grade levels above. Okay, so we went from having eight students to nineteen students. So you can still see that, like in our middle, you know, we still have things that we're working on. We have a lot of kids who are in yellow, but even when you see yellow, you're seeing a change from red to yellow, which means we're still making improvements, and then from yellow to green in both areas as far as reading and math goes. So a lot of improvement there, lots of things. So what we're doing with that too, what you can see from that is our title interventions, different things like that that go into it. But remember that this is just a snapshot of the test in one day. So it's not the end-all-be-all, but it's something that we use as a temperature check to say, hey, is what we're doing going well? Do we need to change things? So then we use this to determine interventions for students. So who needs more support? How do we get them more support? Do they need to see an interventionist more than once a day? So that's what we use this for, is to kind of gauge those things.
Any questions?
Is the reading side, is that what they get the reading intervention? It's not math, it's only reading.
No, we do math as well, so Mr. Pipbert is our math interventionist, but that time is a little bit smaller. Reading is definitely the more heavy-handed as far as intervention goes. Math intervention right now is just either Mr. Pipbert or the classroom teacher, whereas like with reading intervention, we have the title reading teachers, we have pairs, and then classroom teachers who are diving into that.
And that's where we gotta pass so many tests to get them right, which is kind of the challenge.
Yes, yes, yeah.
It takes a lot of time.
Yes.
A lot of effort on our part.
Yes, and then what you, what you can see here, because you can see like with math, you've got a little more of that yellow, that middle, but right now, our big focus is on reading. You can, you know, like by this, you can tell that we're, yes, we're providing intervention, but math is kind of getting pushed to the side because reading is at the forefront of.
Would agree with that. If I always said if you can read, you can do anything.
Right.
The rest will come.
Right, because a lot of the math that kids are asked to do too is no longer just computation, can you add, can you subtract? You know, if you've got kids who are bringing home homework, it's word problems. So if you can't read the word problem, you don't know, oh, can it do multiply? Right, right. So what you're seeing here is that the amount of resources that we are plugging into reading is helping. Be nice if we could equal that into math, but right now, that's just not where we're at. We are dumping it all into reading.
And you're still seeing increased, I guess, results with the new reading curriculum?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, it still seems to be going well. So when we talked about like reading success plans and things like that, that is all based off of, we use iReady to give the diagnostic, which is the state-approved assessment, well, one of the four state-approved assessments. It's the one that we've chosen to go with as the district. But then from there, you have to drill down each assessment. So if they flag on comprehension, then the title reading teachers then have to drill that down even farther and see, is it just, oh, it was, hey, this test, we just didn't do well, or there really is a deficit in that area. So then what goes from giving just the diagnostic is now, here's the diagnostic and three more tests to tell if it's really a strength or a weakness.
So how do, do we know how we compare to other schools?
As far as iReady or as far as reading success plans or? I don't know number-wise or percentage-wise how we compare. No, you're okay. No, they changed the cutoff number. I will tell you that everyone said that they saw an increase this year because the state changed what they called the cutoff. So where they were last year and what they kind of called that threshold has now changed, and now it's even higher. So if you're not here, you're on a reading success plan. So we have kids on reading success plans who probably would have never seen a title teacher before. We have, like, some of our older kids, like, fourth and fifth grade students are on a reading success plan for, like, fluency. Before, that wouldn't have been something like, how fast can you read? But not have necessarily been something that you were seeing a title teacher for. Now that is. If you are not a fast reader, but, I mean, I'm not a fast reader, but I can tell you everything that I read. Well, now it is, and not just now, it's been that way before, but if you are not meeting words per minute by the minute, you'll get a reading success plan. So it's not that you can't read, it's not that you can't decode, it's not that you don't know what you read. You weren't able to read enough words in a minute, so you have a reading success plan for that. And it's very hard to get off of one. Once you get on one, we have successfully exited one from a reading success plan, but it's very hard. So to exit, you have to be green to consecutive test. And a consecutive test is end of year to mid, or beginning of year as well. So summer slide happens, we all know that. So if you were on one and you were green at the end of the year, if you are not green again at the beginning of the year, you are still on it. Even if you stayed the same that you were before, as you moved from, say, fourth grade to fifth grade, what you have to do increases. So it doesn't matter, though, that you've been out of school for two and a half months. You still have to perform like you were in May. So some kids can do that and some kids cannot. We all know that when they come back in May, like you can see here at the beginning of year, at the very beginning, and then they come right back up. It would be nice if you could count their end of year to their middle of year after you've had time to warm them back up, but it doesn't, doesn't look like that. I can find out, though, like, kind of where we compare in R S Ps. Everybody has to report them to D E S T, but I don't know if there's a way to.
Yeah, I don't know, and that just had, was reported with our February student core. We had to go in and mark anyone who's on a reading success plan, what it was for, and what interventions we were providing for every student. So that's required for every school in the state, but I don't know if there's a report.
Other, other than just like calling neighboring schools, I don't know if there's a way to get that number. But I mean, all of our title teachers go to consortium meetings and talk. So I mean, that could very easily be something that we could possibly get if other schools are willing to share. They may not be willing to share, but I mean, it's something I can look into.
I just know from my special ed meeting that in the northeast area, the special ed directors there were all talking about how they've had an increase and how it's kind of a moving target. And it's frustrating for districts and for students. They're like, but I can read.
We saw girls though, that's, that's what I think. That's my takeaway is we saw.
Yeah.
Well, and the, the thing about, if you guys don't understand the importance of iReady, before map data didn't break it down, and you can see here, it makes it easier for the teachers to identify exactly where they're struggling, so it makes it better for us to plan and be able to really reach those kids. So I think these reports are great, so.
Little thing that sticks out to me on the reading side there, it's pretty impressive. So we went from, right, seventy students, went from eighty-six students to seventy students that were one grade level below. The majority of them moved not only up to on-grade level, but above grade level. So, you know, that's, that was a, I mean, that's significant to say that, like, the greater increase was to get above that grade level versus just getting at that grade level. So I think that is a very good indicator that whatever we're doing there is absolutely working.
I think that really ties into what she was talking about, the reading success plans. When your kids come in and at the beginning of the year, we're like, and that's where we're showing all the growth now, is if we could carry that up, but unfortunately, we can't.
Yeah, people would crown upon that, I believe, and teachers in question.
I have a question regarding math, and it's getting off topic a little bit, but. So, and I'm gonna reference particularly fourth grade. So far, at least for my child's recollection, all the math homework is done in class. So I never really see what she's working on until she brings, like, her study guide for a test. And this last one, I spent a lot of time with her working through the problems because she didn't know what she was doing. And so I was just like, why are you not bringing math homework? Well, I did it done in class. And that's great, and maybe most parents probably would prefer that. But I, it bothers me, like, I didn't know she was having a problem with fractions until, you know, she brought that home. And she ended up, like, I don't know, I think she made a ninety on the test, so she did good. It was a stressful evening for all involved, just trying to, you know, work her through the steps. So I started asking her to, like, bring, bring home what you're working on, because I think this is awesome. And that, you know, we're seeing progress with iReady. It's just, which, it's been a long time since I was in elementary school, probably half the table wasn't even born yet when I was in elementary school. But, yeah, it's just, it's, it would be nice to see what they're working on and if they are. So maybe so parents know that there's a problem before, you know, where you're like, oh, your child did horrible on this iReady test, so math.
And from third grade, you've got, like, here's what's coming home today, and you're not seeing.
Yeah, you're not seeing that at all. I do see that on the other side, on the other teacher's side, but not.
All right, high school. If you can look at our attendance rates there, the month of February was, we had a bit of a sickness, so we suffered pretty heavily there. Moving on, we had our winter formal slash court-warming dance, had a great turnout for that. The kids were on K M E M about the C S T L week. That was exciting. The kids really, really enjoyed that, and it was nice. I hope everyone was able to listen to that and shared it out, and seemed the kids enjoyed that. We're right in the middle of National F F A Week. Again, the day with wildlife was gonna include the high school, but we will see where the weather takes us on that. F F A Pancake Breakfast is Saturday. If you're free to go, we would love to have you. It's in the elementary morning room. All conference band will be heading to Paris right around the corner in March. So there's a few, we have Troy ninth-grade centers coming to visit, so they're looking forward to that. Mrs. Setzer set up a visit, and they're gonna come up and check out some of the things we're able to do within our journalism program, and they're gonna visit, it's pretty much like a showcase day, we're, we're gonna showcase it to those students. So looking forward to that. Parent-teacher conferences are coming up as well. I included the January students of the month. Hopefully, we can get February's here pretty quick, once we get some days in school. We celebrated court-warming, well, kind of. We haven't had the game yet, hopefully on Friday. And spring, summer greenhouse items have arrived. They arrived last week. So spent some time out there helping her plant some, some pots. That was pretty cool. So just some different things going on. The Europe trip, barbecue pulled pork, and the F F A Pancake Breakfast. And then I included some pictures there of the C S T O students, just a little K M E M and then eating their lunch, and a picture of them there. We wanna look at our results here from our iReady. I have beginning of the year, middle school, and it says high school, a lot of those, if it's utilized at the high school, is probably at the special ed level. We don't test every single high school student on iReady. So, but if we're looking at it, we're seeing growth. Are we seeing as much at the reading level as the elementary? No, unfortunately, we don't spend as much time on it. Not, I shouldn't say that. We don't have the extra help that the students need that are off, is offered at the elementary. We do have our first round of R S B students at the sixth grade level this year. That has been a work in progress, trying to fit those into, just because we don't have the, the interventionist at the middle school level. So that is something that Ms. Chanley has been able to do within her classroom during eighth hour. Hopefully, we can see some results with that. They're working with the Amplify program, and, and I know she's doing some professional development through Aspire and looking to learn as much as possible about that and hopefully show some growth there. Our math scores, if you take a look, I think it, it speaks a lot from, we went from thirty-three student, or eighteen students early on grade level, and now we're at thirty-three. I think that's just a huge amount, that just speaks volumes to the growth that we're seeing from our kids and continue to do big things. Again, we do use this at the pre-algebra level at the high school, so that's included in there as well. Sorry about my voice.
Hi, I have a follow-up question, just a clarification. So for the students that are like three or more grade levels below, especially once they get in middle and high school, how, how does that catch them back up to be able to get, for instance, maybe all of the math credits that they need in high school? Like, do you have, how does that work?
Well.
Go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, as the reading, as the reading success plan comes along, we're gonna see more and more students. So I feel like in the future, we've had conversations of having to find an interventionist to fill that role within the middle school, to hopefully fill that gap. Because right now, as these students, so we kind of jumped, not jumped the gun, but we're ahead of schedule. Like, we didn't have to do, what was it, fourth and fifth grade last year, but we did in the first year. So now we're pushing our students, so we have, we're ahead of schedule, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So it's a work in progress, but hopefully, we're able to get an interventionist and work with that.
And a lot of those students that you see at the middle school and middle school level who are special ed students, so they're getting that through their special education teacher. And we have talked about the need for, talking with parents through, you know, surveys to see if we as administrators know that if we went title K twelve instead of K six and being able to add an interventionist at the middle school to help with that reading and math would be a benefit. So unfortunately, there's no more money when you go K twelve, but you are allowed to distribute that, those interventions through those grade levels. So that is something that we are actively looking at.
With the potential I just read some things about Trump cutting some federal funding for school districts, what does that look like for us? Have any of them programs projected to be hit maybe or?
From what I've read, like, the Department of Education, yes, he's looking at that, cutting it, but like title would just go to a different department. So the funding would still be there. It would just be dispersed through a different agency than it currently is. That's my hope, because that's a huge impact to rural districts to lose that Title One money, so.
It would be Title One, special ed, and free and reduced lunch.
Those are the federal programs, right?
Those are federal programs. Those are huge.
Yeah.
So, so there's no way they can just drop it. It's gonna be a problem for school districts nationwide. So not to mention, you know, that we wouldn't cut our special programs because our students need that. And we're, we're always gonna attempt to do what our students need best. So if they cut the funding, it's gonna be on our backs to do it, but I, that's a, that's a drastic.
Right.
I can't imagine that happening, so.
Did I just see something today, something about baseline, something about they're getting money to be requiring vaccinations and this? Just not sure.
I haven't seen that. I haven't, I haven't seen that either.
That was a lot, so.
I think there's a, there's some specificity to.
What vaccinations?
That's what I was gonna ask.
I E. Covid.
Yeah.
Oh, I did see something on that, that if schools are requiring covid vaccinations, then they could lose their federal funding. But there's not a lot of schools that require it, so that wouldn't be, we don't, so that wouldn't impact us, but I did see that. Well, I don't have a lot. We haven't had a lot of referrals for special ed because we haven't really been here a lot. And we haven't been able to get everyone tested, because every time we schedule our diagnostic, we're not here, or the kids have been sick. But we are, the referrals are slowing down. And in about the second week of March, we'll, we'll cut those off so that our teachers will have enough time to get all the paperwork done and be completed by the end of the year. So hopefully, that is dwindling down. We do have some curriculum work coming up at our next P D meeting. I've been getting a lot of teachers contacting me, hey, I'm done with my curriculum updates, so that's gone down. So I will continue to have some work sessions just to help those final ones get everything completed. But it's, and have a couple of conferences coming up, one on Infinite Campus. Now that I actually know what Infinite Campus is, I have a lot more questions than when I went last year. So they may not like me when I leave, but I'm gonna come out with a lot more knowledge than I went in with, is my hope, so. And that's all I have.
All right, several updates. First, personnel hiring updates. We currently still have an opening for the assistant, sixth through twelve assistant principal for next year. We hope to hire in March, so we're still taking applications, and we'll start the interview process in March, and hopefully have a name for the board meeting in March. Facilities and operations, some updates there. First, the playground projects, we're doing updates with the fencing there. So currently, we have a fence that doesn't necessarily cover the entire area, and we're planning on moving it so it encapsulates all the entryways from the doors coming from the elementary, and then it'll go around the covered, the covered area and go all the way down. And then they're also currently working on pulling out these swings and having a fenced-in area for them to play at the bottom, on the bottom playground. So that'll be a little bit of a change. We'll give them more room that's just free for them to play ball or wherever it might be down there. So that'll be something that we're working on for fencing, as well as adding a retaining wall for the new material. We're starting to see some of the washouts, so we're making sure that we can keep that as long as possible. It's really nice. We wanna make sure it stays nice. So that is some work that we have going on in the playground. Currently, we're looking for some windows where we can do that without affecting students' ability to play on it. So that is where we're at right now, but we are currently, you know, ordering fence and then getting all those plans put into place. On February twenty-sixth, we have a meeting with Navitas and Navigate for our construction kickoff for the summer projects. If you remember, we're doing transition to L E D lighting, solar panels for the, on top of the gymnasium, and also window replacements for the elementary. So that'll be something that we, with that, on February twenty-sixth, we'll have an update of the plan and what exactly will look like for the scope, some considerations that we are putting into place. The summer school impacted us a little bit last year. We modified the schedule to shorten it and make longer days. We're gonna make, hopefully, look at maintaining that schedule to give them as much time to, to complete the projects as possible for the start of the school year with hopefully not affecting the start of the school year like it did this year. We did get some quotes for the batting cages. That's something we've talked about for probably six months now. We did get a quote to move the batting cages just past left field at the baseball field. That would encapsulate a double, a batting cage, pouring, pouring a new double pad, it's about eighty feet by forty feet, and hopefully having a building down the road to try to put a pitching machine. The quote was for about twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand dollars, just for the, the concrete work and dirt work, and then it'd be another probably twelve to fifteen thousand, depending on how we equip that with the actual batting cage.
How many bids did we get on that?
Currently, just have one for the concrete work.
So was that put out to get more than one bid, or did we just go, did we, did we put out for bid?
We're just, I was just getting an idea of what it is, not yet. I was just getting, well, it's kind of ballpark.
Are we looking to move forward on the batting cages tonight, or is this just?
No, I was just informing, I was just kinda giving you an idea of what we are looking at. So that is what that would cost. Whilst down the road, we're gonna talk about the H VAC and the gymnasium, so that was gonna be about twenty-six thousand dollars for that. We also looked at the current situation that we have with the batting. We also looked at the current situation that we have with the batting cage, which is the concrete pad that's already been established in there. Went and looked at it, looked like it's still in pretty good shape with a couple minor changes. We could reuse that, potentially saving that twenty-six thousand dollars just with some updates there. And then we can utilize that building with a roll garage door, extend it to there and use that, that storage area as a place to put the batting, the pitching machines down the road to keep those long term. So why that's important, why we're talking about the gymnasium, the price for the, the new HVAC for the gymnasium, because one went out and we have to replace it, it's about twenty-five, twenty-six thousand dollars. So we planned on doing the batting cages. We didn't plan on doing the gymnasium, so it would make sense, in my opinion, to move forward and just improve what we already have established and to go ahead and we'll vote on that later on, but if we move forward with the HVAC system in the gym, that would be about the same that we had much for those areas.
If, if we decide, I would still like to see a second quote from somebody else to bid on relocating the batting cages. I mean, I think that would be fair for our community to get, to get that bid, you know, to not let it be, to have some actual numbers for relocation.
Okay.
I mean, not some actual numbers, but a competitor.
Yeah, I agree. No, I agree. I was just trying to get an idea of what it was gonna cost if we were to move it, yep.
What's, what gym, high school?
High school gym, there's only, we only have one of the systems working currently.
And you take some before graduation.
I know, right? So that process, I think they said eight to ten weeks that once we order it to, to get it in, so it'll be kind of a tight window there, but we'll get it done.
So when you go to approve the bid, it's the one on the stage, then who's gonna be?
What's that exactly?
I just was gonna talk about one thing. This year's our rebid year for, for our insurance, and I'm on the executive committee for the insurance. Our consortium went out to bid with Anthem, Cigna, Aetna, and United Healthcare. And United Healthcare is the only one that was willing to bid. Part of it is, the reason is, our consortium is one of the last one that's on a fully funded consortium. What that means is no matter how bad our loss ratio ends up at the end, the insurance company picks up the tab at the end. So these other companies aren't willing to pick up the tab. So United Healthcare came in with a bid of a twenty-seven point eight percent increase on our insurance. And our our consortium MEHG, they negotiated it down to five percent. Now, don't get too excited, because here's what happens, because you're signing on with them for three years. What do you think they're gonna do to the rates next year? So we have an opportunity with our association being part of Gallagher now, of joining the MET Consortium. And we're meeting again next week to talk to them, but they've put an offer on the table that would make our rates either not go up or possibly go down next year, which would be a huge, a huge kudos for our school. Now, it's, it's self-insured, so you know, if things got really bad at the end of the year, what that means is if your loss ratio is, is worse than what what you paid in, they could come back and say you owe us this much money. So we've looked at different options, but this actual consortium is very conservative, and they're real picky about who they let in. Some other companies out there will take whoever will walk in the door, and those are the companies that you usually hear about that they get quite a big assessment, so we're trying to be careful, but we'll have some more information. But what I can tell you today, for next year, our insurance increase, usually we approve this tonight, but we don't, because we don't have renewal rates. But our rates, at the very most, will only increase five percent next year. But hopefully, if everything works out with MET, we're joining a larger consortium, and that'll help us out, so.
Do we know, like historically, what our loss or gain ratio is at the end of every year, so we could have an idea of what that looks like?
Yeah, so I was just having this conversation with Alex. It's important to know that.
Yeah.
Because we're less than a hundred, hundred employees, they don't have to share that information with us, but thankfully, our consortium has shared it with us. So right now, this is not a year to shop around, because we're at a hundred and fifty percent. Yeah. So, yeah, you wanna be in the eighties to be attractive, so. So, so we need, we need to keep this group together and, you know, do whatever it takes to, because if we have to shop around and they look at our ratio, they're gonna say, oh, we'll take you in, but your premiums are gonna go up quite a bit, so. I will let you guys know next week in my Friday memo where we're at with this, and I'll have a better idea. I think we're meeting Tuesday, so. I always said, if it's a single-digit increase for insurance, we're in good shape. So if we could join this MET and see it drop, that'd be even better.
Fact that we're positioned right now, that, that doesn't implicate our, depending on what plan they choose, that cost isn't passed on necessarily to our
Right, to our, right.
Teachers and our staff, so that's good.
Yeah.
On a different note, the line buses, I know they're in a mess, really, with the shuttering plants and parts are getting hard to get. I saw one towed in the other day. Are we stacking them in like cordwood? Are we able to keep them running, or, I mean, what's our parts look like?
Line guys here fixing it today, so they're working on it today. I, you know, I don't know what to say about this. I was talking to some superintendents today. There's two of them. Between the two of them, they have five line buses and none of them run. And they got their line buses out of the Indiana factory. And all of ours came from the Canada factory, and we don't have the issues they have. We've had some minor issues. This one here, a part just went bad on it, and so they brought the part today and they're putting it on. But we've had one for almost five years now, and yeah, there's been little things. Joe's been able to fix. I don't know how to explain this, but we've not spent a dime on any parts they've sent us, or anytime they've come to work on them, they've not charged us anything. This is the first time this part here cost us six thousand dollars for this particular part that went bad on Rhonda's bus that got towed last week. I mean, we've not spent any money on these buses, and I was apologizing to these superintendents. I said, you guys all went with line because of me, and they said, no, we didn't. We made our own decision. And I said, well, still, I feel bad. And they said, why? They were free, so we're not out anything. It's just, we'd like to be able to use them, and so Lion is in the process of taking bids. They filed bankruptcy, so that wiped out a lot of their overhead bills, and now there's some companies that are interested in buying them, and, and they're just gonna operate out of the Canada plant because they grew too fast. They opened up the Indiana plant, or the Illinois plant because of the EPA coming out. They're like, we're gonna need, so they hired all these workers, and these people were all new at doing this. And I think there is a lack of quality control when the buses left. So all these schools that got line buses out of that factory are having, having a hard time. And you're right, people aren't able to get parts, and they're having a hard time getting any kind of service, but they're here, so we did something right. So, yeah, you're right. It's concern. It's like, okay, what's going on? We've had conversations about it. If, if we don't find out anything different, you know, in, in the summer, that nobody's buying the company, and we can see this being a problem, then we need to speed up our diesel rotation and start looking at, you know, buying some more diesels. So if the line buses do give out at some point, then we, we have to figure out what we do then. But ours have been, for the most part.
Have we had any issues with the kids being pulled on the buses as the numbers?
On, on the diesel buses, I know there's been a lot of complaints. Tyler had some issues with his heater, and they're fixing that today too, so it was cold on there.
All buses are cold.
Yeah.
You know, it's just a basically ten bus, I mean, not ten, ten, but I mean.
Phone maybe in there?
Yeah, Red, Red will be the first. If you get a chance, talk to Red, ask him, heat on a diesel versus electric? And he'll tell you flat out, I don't wanna drive a diesel. He says the, an electric bus will, will cook him out of the bus, and that's what he likes it. So there is a difference. I mean, diesel engine on the bus, diesel buses also has to operate, or the bus, whereas the electrics, the diesel is just for the heaters. So it's strictly operating that. So there is a big difference. But in this cold weather, every time you open the door, it's, there's only so much you can do.
Okay, something else we'll have on to the food service report.
So pulled up the numbers. The report's attached, so you can now look at that and see what the numbers are. You know, from last month, I believe when Kisha was here, she showed a lot of success with her, her program, and numbers are way up, so it's great to see that. Kids are eating here and doing it at a high level. Something that was fun that Mr. Turgeon and Kisha did for the staff, staff special day, where they made omelets, and very well received, and they were delicious.
Back that up. Mr. Turgeon, Kisha, and.
I was there.
This man can flip omelets.
I didn't want to get in the way of the magic. Oh, darn it. Yes, I am, absolutely. Oh, that we're working on. I was musical in the search, but I can cook an omelet, so. Yeah, that was fun, but everyone enjoyed it.
Move on to unfinished business, which are no items. Move on to new business, school calendar, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
So the school calendar is attached to the website, so you can look at that. So the school calendar for twenty-two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six. At the February board meeting, our board meeting, professional development meeting that we had, we're able to have the entire staff there and kind of talk about the different options that we had for next year. One being that, the one presented tonight, which is the one with no changes, basically from the last several years previously. Basically started on the same date, ending about the same time, with the breaks very normal and very traditional to what we've had with the same amount of professional development days. The other option we did offer this year, we added a longer Thanksgiving break, because that's some of the feedback that we received throughout the year. So basically, five days of Thanksgiving break rather than just the three days that we've had, and then one more day at Easter. That would have had us ending in May twentieth, so three days into the following week. This one has us finishing on May fifteenth. That one would have had May twentieth, I think, several people, especially those teaching summer school prefer the longer break between the end of school and the beginning of summer, summer school, especially as we start still, you know, in the month of May. So with that information, I was able to get, and I sent out a Google form, everyone voted, this one was the most popular. And for that reason, I'd like to recommend this for the calendar for two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six.
Okay.
All right, so we hit on this. I think it was the beginning of, or the middle of January, maybe right before the board meeting, whenever we started having issues, and then it finally went out in the gym. So we have two units, one that you can see, one that's on the stage. One on the stage went out. Gary went and got two quotes, two people willing to give us quotes. One was Boston John, the other was Peters. Boston John was cheaper, it's twenty-four thousand eight hundred ninety-one dollars and fifteen cents, so we went with the cheaper of the two, and we'd like to get that ordered as quickly as possible, and there is a long lead time in getting it here on campus. So I recommend that we go with Boston John.
And the, the cheaper is more comparative at a level?
Yeah, I mean, the difference is about two thousand dollars on it, so. He does a lot of work here.
Strategic plan, goals, objectives report.
So this is Mr. Harper and I, and parental involvement is huge, and you guys all know that, as being parents of, of the kids who have been here or are here. And so we, we all met as administrators and discussed, you know, like, what are the successes of parental involvement? What things do we already have in place? What things could we do better on? Because we always know that there's always ways to improve. And so what we, what we discussed was some of the great things that we already have going on, or changes that we've recently made to produce parental involvement or increase parental involvement. In the elementary, we've changed up our orientation nights, and I think sometimes I look at that and I'm like, well, does that work well, or does that not work well? Because if you have multiple kids, it allows you to spread it out, but it also makes it hard if you have multiple kids on those nights, and that's the feedback that I've had from parents. And I'm like, and then I have to weigh it, and I go, what, what serves, you know, I know I'm always gonna make somebody mad, but how can I make the least amount of people mad with, with plans? You know, and so as, as we move forward, like with Becky moving into this position, that'll be something that we talk about, is here's what I've learned from families. How do we make a change? Or do you wanna make a change? Do you wanna leave it like it is, or do you want to change it? But like, right now, we offer orientation nights for preschool on a separate night from kindergarten, on a separate night from first through fifth grade. Which is great, as a first-time parent, you know, when you've got your preschool babies, it's the first time you're releasing them into the wild. You want to sit there and talk to that parent or that teacher. When you get to first through fifth grade, you're kind of like, psh, go drop your stuff off, let's get out here as fast as we can. You know, so how do we, you know, kind of combine those things? Because even in first through fifth grade, you still have times where you wanna go in and talk to that teacher, but the setup that we currently have of it is it's very, you know, come-and-go style, cafeteria style, come in. If you wanna talk, talk. If you don't, you know, it's up to you how you do things. You know, and we've gone back and forth between this is what works well, we tried something new, mostly because of covid. You know, we had to split things up because of that, but it worked well, so you know, it's kind of that, it's not broke, don't fix it kind of thing. But it's where we take feedback from parents, though, and say, oh, the majority of our parents like it, so we're gonna keep it. Got a couple people who don't, let me talk to them and figure out why they don't like it, and see if that's something that I can make a change to. We've also kind of made that change with Activity Night most recently to involve parents, because before, it was just kids. And the only thing that parents came for was the informational piece at the end, which is about thirty minutes. Some of you have been to those before, and you can tell that they're not very well attended. You might get ten to twelve parents who come, and it's usually the same ten to twelve parents who come. So when we made the change to, change Activity Night, we surveyed our parents. Would you like to do this? You know, this is why we want to do this. Would you like to do this? Are you interested in it? And then we surveyed them at the end. Was it beneficial? Did you enjoy this? Would you do it again? You know, and took that and made changes from within with that. What we kind of came to in conclusion was that we're really good at surveying parents, but we're not so great on coming back with, from your information, here's the changes that we're going to make, or here's the change that is going to be made. I know I'm kind of hopping around on this, but I figured you guys can read that paper. You don't need me to read it to you, but I'm gonna sum it up in a nutshell. That's what we need to do better, is we need to, after we survey, we need to say, all right, parents, thank you for that. Here's what we're going to do with that information. Because even with the change of summer school, you know, we surveyed, this is what we'd like to do, this is why we wanna do it. Got great feedback. At the end of summer school, what did you think of changing summer school? Got some great feedback on that, also got some negative feedback of, well, what am I supposed to do with my kid for the rest of summer? That's not my problem. You know, like, this is summer school, but that, like, that's the feedback. So I can't, you know, I can't change summer school based off of that one person who said, well, now what do I do with them for an extra week? Whereas on the other side, I got more who said, thank you for letting me have an extra week of summer with my child, you know, so that's gonna outweigh that. But one of the things that we discussed as an admin team was, how do we get that information back out to parents? Of, thank you for your feedback, here's what our takeaway was, now we're gonna take that back and do that. So that is our goal, as you can see at the bottom, that's one of the goals that we made. You wanna talk about the other goal that we discussed?
Wait, sorry.
No, I jumped all over that thing.
Yeah, that's.
Sorry.
So at the high school level, we wanna continue to develop and look for new ways. And so I know that we've talked about this with our parent-teacher conferences, we've kind of, we get the same crowd over and over. It seems like the parents, you know, that are in communication all the time, they're, they're ones showing up, and some of them that we need to have communications with are the ones that are showing up. We're looking at ways, how can we improve? We're looking at ways, how can we improve that? We've talked about adding showcase, some showcase evenings or adding some type of event to try to draw those parents in here to try to, not only can we go over the great cards and talk with the teachers, but we can also showcase everything that our students are doing, which is basically feedback from our showcase days of, wow, this is amazing, these are great things you're doing. How can we show this to the rest of the community? So another thing that we're talking about, and I don't have it on here because we're trying to get it all worked out, but the career technical, they're trying to come up with a showcase night. So where they can come in and we can show off our Mr. Greens and we can have our own cooking and show off our, all of our labs and do everything for those students. We have an art night and we have, you know, we have all those activities, why can't we do that for, you know, those students as well? So that's something we're working on, hopefully we can get that planned and trying to get everybody on the same page with that. But I'm, I'm looking forward to that. I think it's, it would be really neat to invite all the parents in just so they can see how things operate. And showcase days, we offer those, but they fall in the day, during the day and most people work. So how can we get those in here and show those things off up the evening? I think that would be. Some changes that have been made in the last two years. Mrs. Parrish has added the eighth grade enrollment night, which is she brings in the eighth grade parents, they sit down and go over what's, what path are we going, what classes do we wanna take? And it's been a huge advantage. One thing she's looking to add this year is making it eighth through eleventh. Giving the parents the input on that, when we're making their schedules out, you know, kids sometimes wanna take the easy way out and they're, what, what are we doing? So their parents could be there and have a voice. No, you need to push yourself and it's, I'm looking forward to that as well. I think if the eighth grade enrollment night went so well, she wanted to do it throughout the whole school, so it's gonna be a great opportunity. We also have the, sorry, we opened up the Nest in the coffee bus for sporting events and they went uptown. Just anytime we can get those parents involved with that. And the FFA greenhouse, they sold flowers on the square, just being good. It's amazing, we're only two miles out of town, but being up on the square and people stop by and bought them up, so just being available.
Part of the upcoming MSIP cycle is building improvement plans. And I don't know, has, have any of you ever served on a building improvement committee before? We used to, we used to back in the, back in the days, we used to have this. I remember sitting on it as a, as a teacher, but then parents were involved from the community as well. And so in this new MSIP cycle, that is something that we are going to bring, bring back in a sense. And so kind of the ideas that we've discussed, because it's not something that we have to have ready right this second, so we're really talking about what's the best way to reach parents? Cause like we've talked about tonight, it's a lot of, we can see the same parents all the time. So how do we, you know, how do we broaden out so that, not that we don't value the opinion of the people that we see all the time, but we also know that there are many more people out there who are saying things or are contributing thoughts or contributing yays or nays to what we're doing. And so one of the things that we discussed was kind of like an application, if you will, of do you want to be a part of the building improvement plan? If so, fill this out and send it back to us. And then we can take that and say, okay, we need this many elementary families, this many middle school families, this many high school families, so that we can be insured to include parents in that communication of, okay, here's the topic, tell us what you think, you know? So then it's not a, because we know oftentimes if you're not inside these walls, you know, it sometimes feels like, yeah, we don't really know what's going on, even though we do a good job of showing what's here. But I know that oftentimes it can seem like, well, we weren't, we didn't know that, right? So if we include more people in that conversation, we think that that should help with that. But it's how to get people to, you know, cause we were talking about, I could probably name off, you know, ten families right away that I know would fill out that form. I'm like, it doesn't, the same ten families that come to everything that I say, hey, parent night, they're the first ones to show up at the door. I want ten more families who don't show up all the time, why aren't you coming? You know, like, how do I get that? So that was a conversation that we had is, how do we reach more people? So that was just one thing.
A little off-topic, not necessarily related to parents' involvement, but that's a great idea, like bringing them to the table, I think for some of the building improvements and upkeep and stuff like that. Have we ever done it to where we also reached out to the community stakeholders, but not in this room and it does not necessarily have a kid sitting in the, just because there's certain stakeholders in our community that would be extremely valuable if willing to sit in that room and have some conversations about?
We've done it with the steering committees for building projects, facilities, plans and stuff like that.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Yep, that's, I was just curious if you've ever done, just, I think it's great to bring, bring.
Also then that with titles, send it out to like the Ministerial Alliance, the Health Council, you know, those groups and things. And send it to every parent in the elementary when we're having that, like, here's our meeting, please come attend and give us your input, so.
If nothing else, I'm going to contain a motion for approval of parental involvement. Second, call in favor? Moving on to board policies and regulations.
Alright, if it gets to be too much, tell me. Trying to get through as many of these before I retire, so. I've tried to give, either explain what the policy is or what the purpose of the policy is, just so. So I won't go through all these, you guys have read what I said, so I'll just, if you guys have questions, just ask me and I can elaborate on it. And I know obviously, policy forty-two-ten was a big, big discussion, so if you guys, you know, look at that, I put exactly what the attorneys have provided on that. I'll be more than happy to talk about any of these.
Anybody have any questions about any of them?
So.
Favor? I move that we adjourn the regular session and go in the closed session for the purpose of considering the students under section six-ten dot zero-two-one subsections six and fourteen ISMO, personnel under section six-ten dot zero-two-one subsections three and thirteen ISMO.
Mrs. Devlin?
Yes.
Mr. Boss?
Yes.
Mrs. Mew?
Yes.
Mrs. Manzen?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Reel?
Yes.
Mr. Peeler?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.